And we're going to have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Mayor Neely.
Here. Will you please all join me in the quiet salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It gives me great honor to read a proclamation that declares October 21st through 27th, 2012, as National Friends of Library Week. Whereas Friends of Oregon City Library raise funds that enable the Oregon City Library move from a good -- I'm going to try that again. Friends of the Oregon City Library raise funds that enable the Oregon City Library move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading programs, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library receives the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, reader's advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends get their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, I, Doug Newley, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim the week of October 21st through 27th, 2012, as National Friends of the Library and urge everyone to join Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community a better place to live. And in doing so, I have undersigned, I've set my signature on the 17th day of October 2012 for this proclamation. I'm going to ask if anybody wants to speak to this particular issue. Want to come forward? Of course, introduce yourself and what city you're from and why you're here.
Thank you, Mayor Neely. I'm Linda Orson. I'm the Chair of the Friends of the Oregon City Lib -- Friends of the Oregon City Library. That's who I am. And I have a little script here. As early as 1843, the first settlers pooled their books to establish the Multnomah Circulation Library of Willamette Falls, which is thought to have been the very first public library in the Oregon Territory. The Friends of the Oregon City Library have a long history of support in Oregon City. From the 21st through the 27th in 2012, we will be joining the rest of the nation to honor our volunteers during National Friends of Libraries Week. This will be the sixth annual celebration commemorating volunteers who commit so many hours in support of our libraries. Last year, our Friends Volunteer Doned -- our Friends Volunteers donated 400 hours at their booth at the Oregon City Farmers Market selling books. The 31 bookstore volunteers donated 3,735 hours of their time, working the cash registers, shelving books, sorting books, and greeting customers. I'd like to have everybody make a point of visiting the bookstore from October 21st through the 27th to thank our volunteers for their ongoing support. Without their continuing dedication, the Oregon City Library would be a much different organization. It's the Friends of the Library volunteers that characterize what is so good about the people of our community, and we are very fortunate to have them. And I would also like to invite everyone, especially the commissioners, to join us December 6th for our annual luncheon, Friends of the Library Luncheon, and bring a friend. How many commissioners are actually friends?
Actually friends. Yay!
I am.
I'm sure we're all --
You too.
I'm sure we're all friends. I do mean official.
Official friends.
Official friends.
Official friends. We would like to see you on our official registration as friends. We need much support. And thank you very much for being a friend and reading the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you bring enough to pass out to the audience so they can all join?
No, but you can pick one up at the bookstore.
Okay.
The annual luncheon, December 6th, 2012.
At the Ainsworth House.
11:30 to 11 -- to 1:30 PM.
The loving --
At the Ainsworth House.
All right.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak to the proclamation? We have our library director here, Maureen Coe, who does a tremendous job.
Yes, she does.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to go into Sir Monney's proclamation presentations. We've done the proclamation. We're going to go into citizens' comments. Now, I'm going to -- I'm simply going to make a statement. We originally canceled this commission meeting because we had no action items, a very brief request. Commissioner Roth requested that we actually have this meeting. And I will always, if we have a meeting that's regularly scheduled and suggestion has been made to cancel, to any commissioner that wants to have it go forward, we will go forward with it.
I don't have anything else to do in the evenings.
You don't?
That's right. There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, we're going to enter citizens' comments. Now, I've got a feeling people are going to maybe speak to issues that are on the ballot. I'll limit the presentations to three minutes. I'm going to not -- I'm not going to recognize people to come back a second time. So anything you want to discuss, discuss it within the first three minutes. I do want to announce, however, there is a forum that's being sponsored by 28 churches in the area. It's a candidates' forum, and it's also a measure forum. It's going to be at the Abernathy Center, 6:30 to 7:30. Measure 3-407 will be discussed. There will be panelists present that discuss the question posed to voters on the Oregon City. Shall city charter be amended so that future urban renewal plans require voter approval for bond issuance? This is a -- this is a forum. This is not the place where we have forums. You can express your opinions, but we will not enter into a debate among ourselves. This is the place to go. From 7:40 to 8:30, there will be a candidates' forum. It'll be candidates for the city commission, and they'll share their goals for Oregon City and how their leadership would help form a better tomorrow for Oregon City. And from 8:30 to 9:00, the panelists and candidates will be available for personal interaction with citizens. As said, the sponsors are 28 churches in the area. So those people that want to voice their opinions or ask questions, this is the best place to do it. Again, it's Monday, October 22nd, 2012, starting at 6:30 at the Abernathy Center. With that, I'll go on to the floor. And I have here William Gifford and Linda Orson. Linda Orson, was that your presentation, or do you have something else to say?
She's gone.
She's gone. Okay. William Gifford and Alice Norris, will you please come forward? Starting with William. You can be a gentleman and help her with her seat, but you're the first -- you're the first in line.
Age before beauty. Mr. Mayor and city commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. You've covered most of the points, Mr. Mayor, but I did have five points that I wanted to itemize. One is, to have a commissioner basically call a city meeting for the purpose of giving airtime to and to further political agenda is, if not unethical, at least, possibly at best, I think, in poor taste. And secondly, it's an unconscionable waste of taxpayers' dollars, I think, to have a city commission meeting that costs, as I understand, hundreds of dollars. To have one of these meetings, that's my understanding of it. The understanding that most of the comments would be towards Measure 3-407, I did not think it was necessary that the opponents to 3-407 rise up in numbers as has been done in the past when we fill the Pioneer Center with 400 people opposed to the same charter If there's no substantial business to conduct as a policy, it seems to me as though the commission should defer lesser items and cancel the meeting. I'm glad that you asked the speakers to limit their time to three minutes. I suspect that they could be asked to speak to other items other than redundant political views. Fourthly, to remind the audience that there's going to be ample opportunity, as you have before, to speak to these issues on Monday, which is a far more appropriate -- notice that I am not speaking about the measure. I am not speaking about the measure. I'm not here to make a political statement in that regard whatsoever. And I would respectfully ask the speakers that have come to defend 3-407 to just stand down and not make this city commission a political circus.
Any commissioners who want to respond to that, we'll wait until after the speakers here speak. Norris.
Good evening. My name is Alice Norris, and I am the President of the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, the organization that sponsored the fabulously successful bridge-opening festival this weekend.
Yes.
Congratulations to everyone. It was, except for Friday night, which was a little blowy, messy, and the tent was a little soggy, everything wildly exceeded my and our expectations. So because you're a major funder, and I appreciate so much the funding that the city bargain city gave toward the festival, and of course, the fact that ODOT brought it in on time and under budget was certainly also due to the prodding and pushing of city officials and elected officials. So the numbers are pretty amazing, I think. It was about a $40,000 project, and that's without the money that the proceeds, as you remember, are going to go to help the locks effort because it's still -- that's one of the problem spots that we have on the Willamette River. So there likely will be about $5,000 to go to that after expenses or pay -- bills are still coming in. The trolley tours, remember, we had three trolleys going on to the historic sites on both Westland and Oregon City, which I'm not sure has ever been done before, at least in my lifetime. 900 people rode the trolleys on Saturday and Sunday.
That's exciting.
Isn't that amazing?
There were some of them.
That what? Yeah. And they were all hosted, and I thought it was really awesome that we had two mayors, mayors from both West and Oregon City, and two city councillors, one from Kathy Roth and Commissioner Roth, and one from Westland, who rode the trolleys as well. So that was really awesome. The Stern Wheeler had a little party for about 50 people to watch the fireworks, and there may have been, I don't know, 25,000 people watching the fireworks. I'm not sure. But the fireworks were said to be the greatest anyone's ever seen. It was really fabulous. There were about 400 people on the wedding rededication, including our Commissioner Roth here, who looked resplendent in her antique attire.
Oh, please. Define antique.
You weren't referring to her husband that she brought over. I have proof here that Chuck does have a suit. I have the proof, Chuck.
Yes, and they both made the newspaper, and that was really, really nice. The farmers market, about 1,000 people went down to the tent, and then later in the evening when there was a reception, many of the vendors said that this was the most lucrative event they'd ever participated in, and the winery is all sold out on Saturday night during the wine garden and the live music. So that's awesome. Thanks to Commissioner Smith, who's not here, who organized the Battle of the Bands. I thought, even though they played in the rain, it was still a wonderful event. Public Works, Kevin Hanks was our liaison, John Lewis, and --
Well, since you're praising us, we'll let you go.
We'll let you go for another few minutes. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I appreciate the courtesy. And the elevator operators and John Lewis together realized that we were going to leave hundreds and, if not thousands, people stranded in the downtown if they didn't keep the elevator open until 9:00 PM. So I really appreciate that executive decision, keeping the elevators open. I think that it's really amazing that we set a new world record for one-day riders of the elevator. Fifty-six-hundred-and-seventy people, if that's the right number, rode --
We're checking, but I think it's very close.
I think so. I've cut down my records, but anyway, 576 are the people that rode on Saturday. The previous record was 4,000.
Oh, wow.
We'll check on that so we have it down, and I don't have the numbers yet from John for Sunday. And then on the trolley tour, people were supposed to get off, I mean, the purpose of our organization is to raise our boats. And so we were trying to spread visitors to places maybe they'd never gone before. So, for instance, McLaughlin and Barclay Houses had 370 people get off and visit. Museum of the Oregon Territory, 100. Little McLean House, of course, they were offering cookies in Westland. 150 people I saw then. I mean, normally they have a couple handfuls of people on the weekends sometimes, and so this was just awesome for them. The farther people had to walk from the trolley stop, the less attendance we got. So I'm not sure how many you had at the library, but they had 20 at Atkinson Memorial. But it exposed people to things that they didn't know, the treasures that we have in the community. So again, thank you to the city. I think this was a wonderful thing, but the most important thing of all, of course, is that our bridge is open. Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you.
And I would like to give each of you a commemorative poster that was done for the day and one for the city to frame to hang in City Hall.
And I have one question, if I may. The fireworks, I would love to see the city bring fireworks back to Oregon City.
What do you have on that?
Ah, so I'd like information about what company did that and what the cost was.
It's the same one that always did it, Western Fireworks, and they're about the same cost. They always were about $14,000 for 15 minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The extra gentleman was given because it was a partially city-sponsored event, but I want to especially recognize the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition for organizing and coordinating all the efforts. Thank you very much, Alice Norris. And please thank everybody that you see that was involved in that. Yes, thank you.
And this is what we -- this is the plaque.
Thank you.
Isn't that nice? Thank you.
David Perdoux and Phil Roeth-- Roeth-- excuse me, Phil Roethlach, please come forward.
What a gentleman.
Dave Perdoux, Oregon City. I was going to do a little illustration, and I brought a proper along with me, but I think because of the comments that Mr. Gifford made, I'm going to change the plan that I had. I was intending to speak to something that Mr. Fowler said two weeks ago about our Commissioner Roth. And I've spoken before as far as the political posturing and positions and civility in our community. And because of Mr. Gifford's comments, he used the word unethical, unconscionable waste, political circus, stand down, these kinds of inflammatory words, I don't think add to the benefit of our community. It's -- people have emotions on both sides, I recognize that, but I don't think that a commissioner, a standing commissioner, should be addressed this way. And Mr. Fowler, in his illustration of the property tax statement in front of the Urban Renewal Commission, was describing the amounts and essentially saying that what comes out of other items that goes into urban renewal, basically if urban renewal ended, the amounts would go back, revert back proportionally to the other items on the property tax statement, so that it would be a net equal amount of dollars there, and the taxes would not go down even if urban renewal didn't exist. And I think that what he was trying to say was that Commissioner Roth was trying to suggest that that wasn't the case. And I think Mr. Fowler used the word misrepresentation or something like that, and watching him and trying to guess exactly what he was saying, I think he was, well, I won't use the L-word, but making an accusation to Commissioner Roth, and I think that was inappropriate. And he made a point to say that this is going on the public record, and I just want to express my disappointment that this tone is being passed around. Thank you.
Mr. Roethlach.
I'm up. Okay. My name's Phil Roethlach. I've been in Oregon City for a long time. I want to address this voters' pamphlet that was -- false voters' pamphlet came out probably a week and a half, two weeks ago. It's the work of the Oregon City Business Alliance. I would like to present from the Oregon City Secretary -- I said that wrong. The Oregon Secretary of State webpage that Oregon City Business Alliance is solely funded by Mr. Dan Fowler, owner of the Abernathy Center. And it shows here that, whoops, I got the wrong page here. $1,000 was contributed once from the Abernathy Center and $500 cash contributed from the Abernathy Center for this false voters' pamphlet that was handed out in the mail. That's all I got to say about that. And it's all about the ballot measure 3-407 that he's trying to get people to vote no on. That voters' pamphlet was to vote no on that and should be voted yes on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I didn't have any intention to speak anything, but I felt that civility of the process was being damaged by the first speaker. I don't -- division and divisiveness just can't be allowed to exist. We tear our city apart. We have too many people that are entering into making statements that tear down the credibility of the city commission itself, and that's wrong. And any of those types of actions that are like that are unacceptable. And I just, I was, I get appalled by that because, yes, you know, I'm probably one of the more passionate people around with my beliefs. But I don't want to try to ever enter into something that's as divisive, in a sense, name-calling. And anybody that comes before here that does that shows their true stripes, and personally, I find it just terribly unacceptable. And it's, and it should not, it shouldn't be, it should not be happening here. That's, I guess, all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioner want to address anything that's been said?
I do.
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Gifford, I'd like to address your five points in that these meetings are budgeted. They are in the city budget long in advance. They are scheduled long in advance on the calendar. There is no provision in our charter, and believe me, I studied it hard and long, there is no provision in our charter for canceling a meeting. There are provisions for changing meetings. There are provisions for changing times. There is no provision for canceling a meeting. It is prescribed that we have first and third Wednesday meetings. Nothing else. Previous speakers in the last few weeks have spoken very vehemently and frequently regarding political issues, and I don't see any reason why this public forum should say speakers who want to be here tonight should not be able to speak. And that was my reason for asking for this meeting. The city commission meetings are not only to conduct business of the city, but they are a public forum that is announced and allow our citizens to come out and have to say what they want to say. It doesn't matter the timing of the election or whatever else. We should not be canceling these meetings when people have had their say on the other side. It doesn't matter. When anybody wants to speak, they should have that scheduled speech. And the people that spoke previously in no way stood down in their accusations against me or the provisions for the measure. There was no standing down whatsoever. I was called several names. So I think that you're completely inaccurate in your approach to what you gave here for your five points tonight.
With that, adoption of the agenda, does anybody want anything pulled off the consent agenda?
Actually, could I?
Oh, yes, excuse me. Commissioner Mom had something to say. I'm sorry. My apologies.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the people that was there to help support me. I've been very ill for the last two meetings, I believe, and I want to thank Commissioner Roth for continuing to have the commission, conversation with the commissioners, and it was supposed to be, I was supposed to be her counterpart, and I had eventually ended up having a four-day, four-night stay at the --
Hilton Province?
The Hilton Province. I was wishing for the spa, you know, but I'm sure the price will be a little higher than that spa. So anyways, I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged and thanked everybody for the cards and the flowers and the visits, and I appreciated all the prayers and good thoughts, and I am on the mend, and I am going to continue to be on the mend. So those are my comments. Thank you.
It's great to have you back.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to, it might be a little premature for me to say this, but I made a comment, I think, of not the last of a real --
I was going to throw him under the bus.
You didn't want to explain that. Go ahead.
All right, all right, all right. So on September 29th, I was very sick, and I had, was unable to attend the city commission meeting, and I did not notify anybody of this, and that was my own fault.
You were sick.
And so our lovely mayor said, isn't it nice how these meetings go when Commissioner Mom is not here? So I thank you for reminding me to throw you under the bus.
Well, actually, I wasn't completely honest when I said that I agreed to hold this meeting simply because one commissioner felt I should. I really wanted to give an opportunity to demonstrate we'd have a short meeting with you here.
Yeah, you dig that hole. Yeah, dig that hole. I got that in my mind.
Okay, with that, shall we proceed with just passing the consent agenda?
Excuse me. Blaine Meyer brought up a citizen comment card. He actually asked to speak under citizen comments, but it was already passed, so it's on your screen.
He's too late. Oh, come on, come on ahead, Blaine. Come ahead, Blaine. That's all right.
Real brief.
You bet.
My name is Blaine Meyer, and I am the President of the Oregon City Business Alliance. And just wanted to correct a comment. The Oregon City Business Alliance is actually a 501(c)(6), and so it is not a political action committee. And so if you look on the back of this pamphlet, it says Citizens for a Better Oregon City, and that is the political action committee. And I know Mr. Fowler has given money, but we just deposited a check today, a fairly sizable check. So it's not just him. Others are contributing, and just wanted to make that correction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, shall we, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye?
Wait, wait.
Can I screw up?
Let's do our little motion here.
Let's do a little motion thing?
Yeah.
I was going to make it simple. Okay, we got, we have the movers, Carol Polly. We have a second for the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll see if I --
Let him unsecond it.
Can we get that?
Okay.
I'm back.
Got to be quick to beat Commissioner Roth.
Hey.
And then the --
Motion passes four to one.
Consent agenda.
Four to zero.
Four to zero.
And I have to say, this monitor up here is new, and I love it. It's great.
It's so beautiful.
Yes, thank you.
I think our verbal vote would still be faster, though.
I think you're right.
But in any case.
This is fun.
This is fun. I'm with Kathy.
With that, we've got, I'm a little confused here, a staff report, invitation to bid. That was all under the consent agenda. My apologies. With that, we are going to the city managers for communications.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the commission and members of the community know, we, the city has been, for about the last 18 months, attempting to negotiate last 18 months, attempting to negotiate a deal with Clackamas County on their dark fiber project. And I did notice in the paper that Commissioner Roth has been promoted to Clackamas County Commissioner.
I know.
I was hoping that you could, maybe you could help us with the negotiation because we're this close.
I hope the pay is better.
I guess. I think you have better pay and better benefits, so, yeah, yeah.
So most of you know that I was at the International City Manager Conference last week, and I'm on the international committee, and we were giving a presentation there from delegates from China. And there were several people there from Beijing, the city of Beijing, that were talking to us about their democratic process and about some of the things their city is facing. And it sure reminded me of how fortunate we are in the United States. The city of Beijing is adding 600,000 people a year to their 16 million population. So you can imagine what their planning department's going through and the sewer department. There's not really a department. In some places of this city, it's literally open ditches, and the pollution levels are just unbelievable. And there is a little thing with corruption there, but they couldn't talk to us very much about that because.
No, I'm sure not.
I think they were pretty terrified. But it was a wonderful learning experience to be there. I also took a class on civility and public discourse, and I just wrote down three little notes here that some folks have been talking about tonight. And I think it's appropriate for Oregon City since we're the oldest charter city west of the Rockies. I always feel like we have this silent sort of burden that we're supposed to lead in how we do our public discourse, to do it with honor and integrity and dignity and respect. And so they had three little rules, some of which have been mentioned tonight. And it was a couple hours course, but it said essentially, no applause except in very rare circumstances. No name-calling, no insulting or denigrating comments. And I think those are things most of us have learned at the dinner table.
Yes.
I was a slow learner, but I eventually got it. And it's just a reminder that no matter whether we disagree, if we can do so agreeably with dignity and respect, we'll be such a better place. So thank you for those that, on both sides of the issues, that were talking about that this evening. Next, we have, some of our employees in their off time, their off-duty time, do really remarkable things. And from time to time, I want to share some of that with the commission. I talked about this today at Rotary, and there was just an enormous amount of applause for two of our officers from the police department. I'm going to ask Chief Conrad to talk about those officers, the two individuals, and what they've accomplished.
Good evening. It's always good to come to commission and always have good news from the police department, so a couple things tonight. I'm sure many of you know Sergeant Justin Young. He's our detective sergeant in charge of our detective section. Justin is also a Marine Reserve Chief Warrant Officer, and he recently came back from his third tour in the Middle East, this time in Afghanistan. And he is basically a combat engineer when he goes over there. He builds things. And we found out, kind of through the grapevine, Justin's, you know, kind of reserved, he doesn't pat himself on the back very much, but the Marine Corps flew him out to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, and he was awarded the engineer, Marine Corps Engineer Officer of the Year for his duties over in Afghanistan.
Wow.
And what's even more remarkable about that is, is he's a reserve officer. He's not a full-time Marine Corps officer. He does that in his, you know, in his, or in a volunteer capacity, obviously. And it's even more impressive, I think, and he beat out a lot of the people who do that full-time as a profession and went over and did it. So congratulations to Justin for that, so. And the other thing is, and I'm not sure if some of you know Bill Horton, one of our authors, Bill's one of our latter officers, been over here a couple of years now. We actually stole him from Tiger Police Department, just a really, really good guy. He lives in Malala. And the other day, he had a neighbor came to him, a lady, I think it was in her 70s, he said, and she said her husband had fallen. And so asked Bill to come over and take a look, and went over there and found out that the husband had actually had a heart attack before he fell. And Bill was able to give him CPR, bring him back to life, regain a pulse in a heartbeat, and kept him awake and conscious until the ambulance got there, and he's credited with the saving that person's life. So congratulations to Bill.
Wow.
And then the other thing I'd like to share is, we talked about this a little bit in the department head meeting the other day, is one of the things we're always concerned about is how we interact with our, with our neighbors, our community. And to that end, I had, one of my lieutenants came up, Lieutenant Jim Ban came up with a really good idea about assigning an officer to every neighborhood watch, excuse me, every neighborhood association. And that way, it won't take the place of 911. You know, there's an emergency, people call 911 to report a crime, but this person will be assigned as a liaison, attend some of the meetings every year, and make sure he's kind of a sounding board for any problems they might have in the neighborhood, and kind of that personal police officer for that neighborhood.
Oh, what a wonderful idea.
And hopefully, we can address fine situations and stuff like that.
That's a great idea.
The really neat thing about this, it's a great idea Jim had, it really is. The really neat thing is he asked for volunteers. And we had every neighborhood had an officer volunteer for it, and some actually requested specific neighborhoods, too, which is good.
That's wonderful.
Anyway, and we're hoping to get that started here probably in the, in the next month or two, so.
That's great.
That's really exceptional, Mike. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then I wanted to ask Scott Archer to remind the commission, some of you may have forgotten because you've had a lot on your plate lately, but Metro is talking about a bond measure, I think, next year, and I want to give Scott a chance to remind you of that, just so you can have that on your radar.
Commissioners, the, I went to a regional Parks and Recreation Director's meeting recently at, at Metro, and they, Metro announced that this has been on, kind of on their radar for a little while, but it sounds like it's, the discussion has become quite a bit more serious, and, so the Metro Council in the coming weeks is going to be considering a five-year levy that would provide funding for the care of natural areas and parks, Metro's properties, not, not for their local jurisdictions or what have you. And that levy would likely be referred to the ballot in May of 2013, so this, this coming spring. They haven't determined a levy rate, although it sounds like they're kind of targeting around nine or 10 cents per thousand. And this would be a regional, a regional levy funding measure. So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Any, any regional money issue on the ballot will, you know, affect other jurisdictions and so forth.
Absolutely.
And did you want me to mention about Clackamas, the trees, David?
Yes.
Okay. So just as a heads up to you, Commission, and for anybody that's listening, we, we have to manage a large number of trees in our, in our city parks. In doing so at Clackamas, we have been monitoring some trees that have, look like they're becoming pretty significant hazards, and, and there are a number of these that have come to the point, basically, of failure, which means that they're going to pose a threat to, to human safety and to property and so forth. So we had our staff do an analysis, and then we also had an independent arborist do an analysis, which is our typical procedure when we get to this point. And it looks like there are a total of eight trees that we're going to have to be removing in the coming weeks. A number of these are mature trees, so, you know, it'll be, people obviously will probably see what's going on there. And this is just part of our natural maintenance process that, you know, trees live, and then eventually they die. And our job is, in populated park areas, is to try to take care of that before nature does and knocks them into somebody or something like that. And as, as you know, Commission, we've been, over the last couple of years, we've had a, an urban forestry initiative going on where we've been planting lots and lots of trees. We've already, in anticipation of loss of trees, we've planted literally dozens of trees at Clackamas Park or around the area of Clackamas or kind of in that vicinity. And we're going to continue to do that in the, in the next year to two years as well. So just, you know, we lose trees, but we're also aggressively planting as many new trees as, as we can that fit in with the, you know, the particulars of the, that system or that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the commission may remember that we didn't, we didn't formally have budgeted funds for that tree replacement the way we are now, and so I think it may be hard to see the results right away, but it's definitely the best stewardship you could offer is to replace those trees at a higher level than we're removing them, and that's what we're, that's what we're doing. Also, we're going to, I was just talking to Mr. Conkle, and before the years, we'll be finishing our application for a Tree City USA designation through the National Arbor Day Foundation. And then lastly, I will be in town, but I will be out of the office the next two days because HR says I don't take enough vacation time, so. Use it or lose it. But I will be around if you need anything, you can call.
Thank you.
That's all I have here.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. I'm going to request before I start to have Commissioner Polly perhaps talk about the C4 retreat. You were there the first day, and then I can follow because I was on there the second day, so if that'd be all right with you.
Sure. Yeah, it was, it was very interesting to see all the cities coming together and working together to try to come to a funding solution for roads. And there is consensus, there were a couple things that they thought might work better than other choices. So there was some progress being made there. That was about it.
Okay. Could, you want to kind of talk about the, because it's come before us in terms of Commissioner Mum's report about the, how it transpired in terms of a payment maintenance fee from the county and how that, when that particular meeting? Well, it was discussed, I think, the first day, and it came into our second day of discussions, I think, that we had, the county was looking at having essentially something like a utility fee for maintenance purposes. City of Oregon City and others were opposed to it because we already pay a city maintenance fee for, for, if we're in, in the city. And that was a point of dialogue that occurred at the C4 as well. The, the issue for us and for many is that, in many ways, the city subsidizes the county through our, through our county tax payments because we have unincorporated areas, almost one-third of our, well, probably close to a half of our urban area is in fact not in the city, at least one-third of it is. They are getting city services from the county, and their, the tax rate they pay is not much greater than ours, so we're, we're essentially subsidizing the unincorporated urban area of the county. And.
That was just one choice, though.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
There were other things on the table that would, you know, get everybody in the unincorporated areas, like the tax.
Right. And so the point is that I think the evolution of it is that we, who have actually made decisions to do things ourselves, will not be part of that effort.
Right.
And, and so other, there might be some cities that participate, I don't know, but I think the understanding is those of us who have actually taken the action to have payment maintenance fees on our own will not be paying into the county's services.
I didn't hold up my green card for that choice. It was red. Yeah.
And I was not able to go the first day, but Commissioner Polly was, and I went to the second day of the C4 retreat. C4 is the Clackamas County, Clackamas Cities, what is that?
It's the Clackamas Cities.
What's the other two Cs?
C4 is Clackamas County's coordinating committees.
Okay, there, thank you. Anyway, all the cities participate, we have, I, I spent the, my days sitting next to Counselor Niem from Malala because there's a senate, there's these entities called ACTS, and there are transportation entities that are coordinated activities among the jurisdictions that are, have transportation issues. And in our area, there is one, but it's only for the metro region. And we had some of the county cities that were outside the metro region were concerned because they have no such organization through which they can operate in dealing with transportation issues. Malala was probably the most vocal one there, and I was supporting them because, you know, they're trying to develop industry, some of them perhaps to support the ag entities and so forth, but they have no good transportation alternatives available, too. I mean, you have 213, but it's not a, it's not an effective way to getting their produce out. They can, the other way they can go out is through woodburn. But those rural entities get fairly well-ignored in some of these major transportation issues, and they, they brought that up, as well as other of the rural cities. We've got basically three, three cities that are outside the metro, the metro, metro region, and that is, can be, and Estacada Sanbi and Malala, and those three cities fall outside, and many times their needs are not looked at with the same degree of interest or, or capability that the, the ones that fall within the metro region. So that was another issue that came up in the final day of the C4. The, the issue of the, that came up on the metro levy is a subject of, of interest to me because if there, some, some people are probably familiar with compression, but as, as values of properties drop, they hit a point where the tax, the level of taxation may end up dropping, depending on how far the, this thing called compression has gone. And we are all under, I believe it is measure five, where we're set with a cap in terms of all of the districts, with the exception of school, it has, school districts, it has its own cap, but the county, the fire districts, all of those entities that provide services that are covered by property taxes are capped in total at $10 per thousand valued property. When people pass levies and the compression hits, these levies, and we've got two of them in the county, and that is the sheriff's levy and the vector control levy that are in the county, we pay out to those taxes. But as compression hits, the first ones that get cut out are the levies. And so levies are not a very good mechanism because as compression, if compression becomes severe, those services are the first to disappear. They disappear before the city tax rates get lowered and so forth. I had mentioned this before, but this was a subject where our metro advisory committee chair had called a meeting for regional mayors today, and the League of Oregon City had presented two, two issues that they're planning to put forward to the legislature, legislature for, for referral to, to the, to the voters. One of them deals with the compression issue, and that is to take special levies that are voted on by the people, that is, the people support the levies themselves, and remove it from the $10 cap, so that they, they, if they're voted on by the people, then they can, they can stand and have their full funding throughout the levy period, which is restricted to five years. I don't think you can pass a levy for more than five years, so that those can stand without being cut into should compression hit. The jurisdictions that are already under the, have districts, they're still under the cap, and that's not going to be touched by the proposed, proposed legislation that's being put forward. The second one that's being put forward, and I've mentioned this one before as well, is that those people say, for example, that had property and owned it before a measure 50, I guess, was put in place, that restricted tax rates to increase to 3% a year. And those housing units that come in subsequent to that pay different tax rates. For example, say, my house is, I don't think my house is worth, say my house is worth $200,000, it has an asset value of $200,000. If a house is built now at $200,000, they're going to pay substantially more for that house in taxes than I do. And because I've had a 3% increase, and their property will come up at the actual market value, and they will be taxed at the market value. And so the other piece of legislation that is being recommended for, by the League of Oregon City, is to reset the taxes at the time of sale. That is, if you sell it, somebody else buys a $200,000 tax, they will pay the same value as somebody else who bought in the market at that time, a new house worth $200,000. I, I'm making a request that Representative of the League of Oregon City speak to the city commission on these two issues. And that'll be coming forward. commission on these two issues, and that'll be coming forward. I haven't made the request yet. I indicated to the person that I would make the request, that we'd be interested in that. I have not made the request formally, but the person, Chris, can't remember his last name, but I have his card, but I indicated that we would be making that request to have these two specific issues discussed, whether it be at a work session or the city commission, so that we all have an understanding of what these two measures are. Okay?
That'd be good.
A couple of other things. Alice Norris mentioned that it actually rained quite heavily on Friday evening when we had some of the events. The one that it hit hard was the battle of the bands, Oregon City High School band and West Lynn High School band started on their respective sides, Irish Bridge and came together, and they alternated in terms of the music they were playing. And even though they were getting soaked, all the Oregon City members of the band and the, and the kind of pep squad that was, I don't know what they call it, but it precedes the band, they were all smiling in that rain. It didn't seem to me the West Lynn people were doing neither.
It doesn't really show what they're not used to.
Well, I think it had something to do, the night before, there was the rivalry game, West Lynn and Oregon City, and Oregon City won that game.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes. Now, first of all, the issue they were facing in the short term was, they had lost the nine previous games. So this was a substantial turnaround. But you have to look, I mean, we're Oregon City, we're the oldest city, so you've got to look at these things in a historical aspect.
Yes.
The result of that victory is that Oregon City, over the history of the game, this is, as far as we know, the longest continuous rivalry game in west of the Rocky Mountains, between two high schools. Oregon City now stands at 49 wins, 42 losses, and apparently, there was one game that went into so many overtimes that excited to call it a tie.
Wow.
So, we are ahead by seven over the history of their thing. The other thing, well, that's it. Not quite, there's a couple of other things, a couple announcements I have to make. One of them is that we do, we have scheduled an executive session after this commission meeting that has been canceled. The other thing I wanted to announce was that we do, this is the, this is the end of the year, and at the end of the year, we have certain of our advisory committee seats become open, and whether somebody else reapplies for that same seat or not that they're holding, we still request other applications, and they'll all be reviewed in the process, and I'm going to announce the openings. The Budget Committee, there are three openings. The Oregon City Improvement Trust, there's one opening. The Library Board, there's one opening. The Metro Enhancement Committee, there's one opening. The Natural Resource Committee, there's one opening. These are positions that are coming to an end in terms of the current term. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, there'll be three openings. Planning Commission, one current opening, but there's also one current vacancy, that is, there's one unexpired term. I would like to fill that one as soon as possible. We also have on the Transportation Advisory Committee, three openings, but we also have one current vacancy. That is, the term has not expired on that one, somebody had to leave, and I'd like to fill that one as soon as possible. And then we have the Urban Renewal Budget Committee, one opening. The deadline for application is for October 31st. Now, no decisions will be made in any of those openings until we have all the applications in, but I would like the opportunity to actually fill the current vacancies, if possible, beforehand because they are current vacancies. So we have, just to reiterate, we have one for the Planning Commission that has a current vacancy, and one for the Urban Renewal Budget Committee that is a, oh, excuse me, one for the Transportation Advisory Committee that is a current vacancy, and I would like to fill those as soon as possible. So among those people that are applying, we'll try to inquire whether or not they would like to fill an unexpired term and consider them at that particular time. I'm also making appointments to the South End Concept Plan Citizens Advisory Committee. Now, these appointments have already been made, I sent out the letters already, but these are the people, and these are the positions that are being filled. Adam Zagel, he's representing the city at large. Alan Baker represents the Parents Teacher Association, so representing the schools. Andrea Schmierbach, she represents businesses. Bob Roth, who's a member of the Natural Resource Committee, will be representing the Natural Resource Committee. Bob Burns, representing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Bob Lissau, representing the Transportation Advisory Committee. Denise McGriff, representing the Planning Commission. Jerry Hill, representing the faith-based organizations. Ginger Redlinger, representing Magoffin Elementary School area. The Gwen Gosderekson is a Leland Central Point New Era County Planning Organization, that is, she represents the rural area, a budding, the South End neighborhood. Marjorie Hughes represents business and the development community and real estate. Norm Stewart, the South End Neighborhood Association. Paul Heimowitz represents the county at large. Rachel Thompson represents the county at large. Tom O'Brien, representing the Hazel Grove Neighborhood Association. And Zeb, and I'm not sure I can pronounce his name, is it Yatchlich, is that right? Or do you know? Anyway, that's what it looks like, and he's representing the city at large. Now, I want to make a, these are people that are specifically assigned to these organizations, but there are going to be numerous public meetings associated with this effort. There'll be various opportunities for people to speak to the issues in developing this particular concept plan. So anybody who is interested is going to have the opportunity to attend these public meetings. They can sit in, of course, on any of these meetings of the Concept Plan Citizens Advisory meetings as well to hear what's going on. I don't know, Mr. Conkle, if you want to add anything to that or not?
No, I think it's just, you know, we worked with some of the members of the Neighborhood Association down there, as well as the Planning Commissioners, in vetting the consultants. I think they've put together a very good scope of work to really try and engage the community out there and focus on trying to reach a broad citizenry, both within the city and within the county, that hopefully through this process, at the end of this, will hopefully come to consensus to be able to have a plan that we can bring through the legislative process and get adopted out in that area of South End.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, any other commissioners have reports they wish to make?
I have one thing I'd like to mention. Because Lieutenant Van's worked with me and the, talking about Neighborhood Watch and the incidents we had here in Magoffin neighborhood, he gave me a website, and I'm not remembering the name of the website, but it's the National Neighborhood Watch Association website. I went on there, and they, four times a year, they put on a program in different parts of the country to train people to become, to organize Neighborhood Watch programs. It happens to be in Portland, November 13th and 14th, and it hasn't been here for like three years. So it'll be here November 13th and 14th, and it's right over at the Jamboulay Training Center on 82nd by Costco. So I will be attending that, and if anybody else wants to register, they can do that online, and it should be a very interesting session.
Yeah, great.
Any other reports? Anything else really good of the order?
No, I'm good.
Do I have anything else to do, city recorder? With that, it's you in the meeting.
Thanks.